Good evening, this is the Rutland Town Planning Commission and it is August 1st, 2019. Thank you all for joining us. Let's start the meeting tonight with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, does everybody have a copy of the agenda? Any proposed changes to that?
Move to approve?
Second.
Second? Okay. Any comments? All those in favor of the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No public comment? No public? No new business unless someone has something to add to that? So we'll move down to the old business. And let's review again our public meeting we had three weeks ago for the stormwater ordinance. It was interesting, I reported to the Select Board a couple of meetings ago about the meeting, and Mary Ashcroft, who is here for the Select Board, her take from the meeting was, "Well, you know, people just need to get a permit." And hopefully they'll understand things better through that process. My, and I think most of our takeaways, were that there's still a lot more education that needed to be done.
How about what?
A lot more education about the permit and about the need for the permit needs to be done. Now Jim, you had some ideas that maybe the Select Board or Planning Commissions in the past have used to get the word out about things like this. You mentioned something about hitting the streets and actually going door-to-door. What was that used for? Or was it something you just came up with?
I can't recall now specifically what the issues were or the venue, but it was back in the early days of my being on the Select Board, some of us had an issue that was in the town warning, and we felt quite strongly that some of the people were just not paying attention as they should to the importance of that. So a few of us went out and knocked on some doors and explained exactly what the impacts were, you know, wrong gone. And it made a difference.
Yeah.
It made a difference. And of course, people in neighborhoods talk to one another, and if you get one or two that are neighboring with their next-door folks, it helps.
Yeah, we didn't quite get that critical mass at the public meeting. We had three people from the neighborhood here.
How many people did we get, may I ask?
Three.
And in the face of what we're talking about, as I understand it, the numbers are quite small compared to townwide.
Compared to townwide? So where, Bill, correct me if I'm wrong, for the actual permit, the land disturbance permit, it's 40 some odd properties, parcels?
For that stream buffer, yeah.
The stream buffer, and then for the discharge and polluting of the rivers, that's the whole watershed. And, well, the whole watershed, meaning the Two Brooks, Moon and Mossy?
Yep.
And all properties along those, and that's 80 some odd.
Yeah.
There was one other one that showed up, that came in, he said he was in the hospital the night of the hearing that we had here.
Did he get his answer?
He was very concerned, well, he didn't talk to Bill, but he was very concerned that he supported what was going on, so.
He took the bill home with him to try to read and understand, he'll come back with a question, so.
Yeah.
The permit is up, it is, they did fill in the permit fees and things, but it is up.
Yeah. But then again, that only takes care of one of the major things in this ordinance, and that's the land disturbance that you need the permit for. It's the 80 properties that have not been addressed.
Well, in this case, the issues are such that you've got a confined number of folks that are going to be impacted. And it's incumbent upon them actually to be informed, but always a few and any group that aren't. And I think for those few that aren't, they should be targeted and talked with somehow.
Yeah. I mean, I guess another option is maybe in the fall, holding a meeting for those neighborhoods, you know, at the school or something, maybe having Andres come down again, if he's willing.
At the school?
You know, some, by the most obvious location, but someplace on that part of town. And try that again, and maybe make that more targeted.
We did discuss doing a registered mail, right? Which would be in the neighborhood of $300 and something dollars?
Seven dollars a letter.
How much?
Seven dollars a letter.
Seven, okay, so my math is wrong. So we're at about under $600, give or take?
No, there's 120 properties total.
Oh, this one?
Some of them overlap.
I thought it was.
Yeah, some of them overlap, but.
But say 100.
I thought it was 80.
So.
But at least then it's done. It's completely done. I mean, it's, no one ever has any recourse against us, or can never say that they didn't hear about it.
But do people take those letters more?
A registered letter?
Do they still take them as seriously as they used to?
I think so. I mean, I can't conceive of having a registered letter in my box and not going in, not finding out who sent it.
Well, you get notified. I have about a 50% return rate on certified mail. That doesn't get picked up.
Really? I never would have, I don't doubt you for a moment, but I never would have guessed it.
It's come up in the board meetings a couple of times, and JP has said that there is statute and precedent that says people are charged with getting their mail. So if you send it certified, we would send it certified and regular mail, and he said, saying I didn't get it, I didn't go pick it up, is not a valid excuse. People are charged with getting their mail. So if it's there, it's assumed they had, they got it. So if you send a regular mail and certified, it's assumed they got it and assumed they read it. So there's no statute, there's no, it's, there's statute that gives protection for that.
Even if it comes back?
Right, because we send it to, we send, when we send it certified, I would send a certified copy and a copy of the same thing, just in regular mail. So that way, that doesn't come back, that doesn't come back.
And JP is.
But if the certified letter does come back, it's implied that the person knew that it was there and chose not to take it, accept it.
But the issue is notice.
Right.
And I know every time I sent something out certified, in those years so long ago when I practiced law, I always sent regular mail also. And more and more, that's been the practice. So it is deemed notice, but that's only the legal aspect of it. It helps, but I like your idea of having it over in that area, at the school, having a meeting in the fall. And I like, and maybe we ought to go door-to-door at that point, and say, "Just want to tell you, there's a meeting about this, here's the regulation, please come." And then we've really gone as far as we could go, and it's not that taxing. I mean, we're just seven of us, eight of us, 10 doors apiece?
I mean, there's not that many people that are going to need to come get a permit, but the ordinance for both that land disturbance section and for the pollution section opens up for people to report that others are not meeting the ordinance, right? Both those sections? You know, if you, if I'm making myself clear, that, you know, that people need to know that even though this won't be used that often, they are still responsible for the stuff, and they may still be liable.
You know, there is a, there's a hole in the logic, in a sense, and I'm not being critical, but it's okay for the first round of people, current residents, but when there's sales, those people don't know, it's not, it's not part of the transaction. We're always going to be faced with some potential problem of people saying they don't know.
Right, right.
But sometimes that's not an excuse either. But I think more work of some form is sensible. Some more attention to getting the word out, like you suggest.
No use in doing it this summer, this month, but September tends to be a little busy with back to everything stuff. So maybe later on this fall. Do we, do we have a clear enough idea what we want here? Do we want to set up a subgroup to make some suggestions? I think we can wing it for now.
So it seems to me that there are two pieces of this. One is getting notice to people, but before that is just getting people, getting their attention to look at what we're doing, to come to whatever we have a meeting. And obviously, what we sent out didn't get much attention. And I have to tell you, if I received something like that in the mail, I'm not sure how much time I would have spent reading it. It just, it wasn't anything that you could look at for five minutes and really know what's going on. And Andres, when he was here, one of his, one of the things he said was, "We could send out a one-page notice, just saying, 'Very important meeting that has to do with whatever the two things are,' and the date." Where people don't have to read it, they don't have to understand it, they have to know that there's an important meeting.
Affecting your property.
Affecting your property, yes, or your residence, whatever. Just, that's to get their attention, to give them notice.
One of the questions that I thought of after you and I spoke that day about this was, do these affected property owners get a covenant or a stipulation on their need for these requirements?
I don't believe so. I mean, much like any other town ordinance, it's just, it's at that level. And it applies to either all town properties or certain town properties. And I guess the hope is lawyers would, working with, you know, new homeowners or new landowners, pass along this information, or say, or tell people to check with the town and see what permits are required for various things?
When a new homeowner comes in, that is not something that a title examiner would generally look at, look for. You look for liens on the land, you look for encumbrances, if there is zoning, you need a zoning letter. I would think that a lot of attorneys might be blindsided, just like landowners, because it's not something that historically has been a part of the land records examination. It does not affect title. And there's no, for 95% of the landowners in town, there's no impact. If there was a charge like sewer or water.
Is it some kind of a checklist, having all of these properties identified, and when a property transfers, just make sure that then a notice gets sent to that new property owner?
But from here?
Everything comes through, yeah, everything comes through the office here.
Yeah.
These two.
Well, that's, that's an interesting thought, Howard. A house changes hands. It's not in the area of these two ordinances, not impacted, nothing happens. A deed comes in, do you get a copy of every deed, of every transaction, or you notify?
Of the PTR?
I'm sorry?
The PTR, property transfer, yeah. I read the deeds.
I don't want to make more work for your office, but wouldn't you be the, your office be the logical one to first, have first awareness of a property that's transferred that's been in? So three times a year, something could be sent out, you could notify Bill, notices in the area.
I can look to see if I can find a feel in the grand list where we could flag it, flag all of the properties that are of concern. And then when we do the updates, when we, when we do every property transfer, we will review that spot and pick it up at that point. I think that would be the, probably the safest way to do it, and just got to find a place to.
That's all, that's good, and that's a good thing to look at. I think the priority still is to get to the 100 property owners right now.
No, that's, that's two separate things. That doesn't, in my view, it doesn't impact the program you're discussing.
Right.
This is for future landowners, which I mentioned earlier, that they would not likely to know, and this, what Howard is, you've been talking about is, would that be an efficient way to know, and wouldn't it be too burdensome? And I, I think, you know, my sense is, and I don't want to talk for Howard, but my sense is three a year would be a lot.
Oh yeah, no, well, you never know what's going to happen, but we've got people that are, we have a lot of turnover of properties in the town, and just look at what happened over in Beaver Pond and Proctor. You know, accidentally, the work that was done, and so people, they really need to be made aware of it. I'll look to see where I can flag these, and I can get a list of everything from Bill, if I can do this, and then flag them, and when we do a property transfer, we go through the whole thing, and I, at that point, I don't have to notify Bill that this is a new property owner, and he can send them the information.
Right, right. And maybe the same one-pager that we could ask Andres to come up with. And yes, Mary Beth?
What about, maybe this isn't allowed, but what about the property tax bills that are coming out soon? Could we get another paper, put it like everyone opens their tax, property tax bill, right? Or maybe that's not allowed to put other things in? But just for those properties in that area?
Well, that, well, they got their hands full. They just printed tax bills today, and for them to pull out 100 or whatever of those, it's.
It would probably work a lot smoother if it was everyone.
Yeah.
Even if they're willing to do that.
Yeah.
So if we get a one-pager, we mail it out, certified or just regular first class.
First class with tracking, it does the same thing, lets you know that it got there. Doesn't cost anymore, and it's not as costly as certified mail.
Does it have the same legal implications?
I would imagine, you got a receipt that says that it was delivered. I don't think it costs a whole lot more, and it certainly doesn't cost but a certified letter.
If we send out this certified notice of the meeting that you're talking about, would we still do door-to-door to remind people?
Well, Jim suggested that we do it before the meeting, to beef up attendance, right?
What I'm seeing.
Just to make, after the letter's sent out?
Yeah, that's what I was asking.
Just remind people.
Yeah.
How does that sound? Everyone willing to do that?
Walk to a door and knock on the door? I'm game.
I'm game.
Nine of us?
I'm sorry?
There's nine of us, Planning Commission members?
Ten operators, yeah, that's one big deal.
When do you think we should hold the meeting? Because we'll have to check for the school unavailability and all that.
Early October, maybe?
Is there any other location besides the school?
Well, you got, back here, I suppose, I mean, this, this is the easiest place to get to, it's available, but.
Not the easiest for those people, though?
No, no, no.
It's not the most, it's not hard to get to, it's just not the closest.
How many meetings are you thinking of having?
Probably one, just.
So how many properties are adopted out here?
We're talking about, there's some overlap. So there's 40 and 80, so with the overlap, about 100.
About 100 entities that would be implicated, so.
And some of the people are, live out of state, I mean, they're just, they're absentee landowners, right? Some are businesses.
Yeah, some of it's just land.
Right?
Have to dock on a door, but it's just land. But I'll try.
Would you, we can have Andres back down again?
We could, we could ask him. He does, he does a nice job explaining this stuff. But, I mean, just have him come down again for like three people is.
Well, that's a little tough.
Yeah.
You could put something in the notice about the consultant who specializes in these kinds of things is here to answer, will be available to answer your questions.
Well, it might be helpful for us to have a list of who actually has a physical residence on the property that's affected. Who just owns land, and there's a PO box or a phone number to reach them elsewhere. And who is just an absentee person that's out of state or someplace else. Because the approach to each of those three groups may be slightly different. I mean, going and knocking on the door is fine for someone that has a physical residence on that particular property, whether that's a business or an individual. But if someone just has a post office box for a piece of, for a parcel of land, that might be a little different. If there's a phone number associated, you could make a call. And if it's out of state, that's yet a third level layer of, level of complexity.
Something, you just said something that appeals to me as much as knocking on the door is phone calls. It's a hell of a lot easier.
That's a lot easier, but what happens is, a lot of people don't have phone service today, so you can track them down, but you get what you can. I mean, you struggle to get a landline into a house today, everybody's got cell phones.
Do we even have phones connected to these parcels?
Well, that was the question that I was asking. But that.
Grand list does not have phone numbers, it's only the addresses.
But those are mailing addresses?
Usually.
Well, even so, not to belabor the point, if we got half of them, by sitting down for a half an hour looking up the phone numbers, that cut the, cut the knocking on the door down in half. Calling to tell you about this, we've sent you, just remind you, it's important? I don't know.
Okay, so we've got a one-pager to send out. We're going to ask Andres to help us with that, and if he could attend. We've got scheduling something with the school in October, preferably early October. Do we want to do door-to-door or phones?
I think it depends on the configuration of the landowner, and whether they have a physical residence or a phone. I think Norman has, there's a certain, if there's a physical residence, and you can try a phone call, because you can identify one, that would save time, energy, and effort. But it's not going to preclude having to go door-to-door if there's a physical residence, whether that's a business. Well, a business, you might be able to use a phone call, a phone call to alert, but I, I don't know. But my thinking is that if we can identify by phone, it would save the amount of time to physically go and show up. If it's a business, it's likely not to be open much after 5:00. And if it's an individual homeowner or landowner that has a residence on the property, they're likely not to be home until 5:00, unless they are retired.
Well, doesn't mean we couldn't call them in the evening.
No, right.
How big a job is it to get these properties and physical addresses identified?
They already have them. We've sent out the mail.
We have 40 of them.
We got the 40, oh, that's right.
I don't know if we have the big list.
Okay. And we want the big list.
If I may. Isn't the object of this to get the ordinance in front of everyone, of all the affected properties? So shouldn't we just start with a plain mailing and mail them? That we can do for 50 cents a piece roughly, so $50? When we're talking about not going and knocking on doors, if everyone is compensated the way that we normally are, that costs almost $300, if it's the same as a meeting. So that's, that's what I'm saying, three times, 30 times nine people, $270. So it'd be a whole lot less expensive to do the mailing. And to start that off, and, I mean, we could put in, I'm just thinking out loud here, or some kind of a card to say, "Did you get it?" You know, a little self-addressed card inside, would give us some.
Yeah.
Maybe that would raise it up to a dollar, if we had to enclose the card, a postage, you know, a postage-paid return card inside it, and that would still only put us at $100.
Yeah, I think you're a little bit understating the case postage-wise. The ordinance is pretty thick.
Well, we wouldn't be sending the ordinance, we'd be sending them to the town website, just to read the ordinance.
And you could hand out a notice.
Oh, we'd send a letter directing them to the town website.
Yeah, yeah, the, the letter would just, yeah, would summarize what's in the ordinance. Sherman, did you?
I, I think, it feels like we're over complicate, we're complicating this, because I would think due diligence would be our getting something to people saying, "There's a new ordinance, it's important, it's critical to you to read it, and you may attend this meeting if you want more information, otherwise the ordinance, you're still responsible for it whether or not you attend the meeting." And ensure that everyone gets that. I mean, other than that, what can we do? We can't, we can't hold people's hands. And I think, I think we've really done our due diligence in doing, in going that far, and having the second meeting, our third meeting if necessary.
Right.
But, but tracking down people and calling them and looking up their numbers just sounds over the top to me.
Andy has a good idea, if you put, if you drop in a postcard that would be, that would be postage-paid back to, back to Town Hall, people could check off the box. I'm interested in attending a meeting, which is, it's already published that what the date would be, so that they could check that off. They could say, "I would like somebody to give me a call to tell me more," then Bill or somebody here could call and just tell them what it's about. Or, "Thank you very much, I know where to find this on the website, no further information's needed." And then if you get that back, now you know what you're dealing with in terms of people coming to a meeting, and, you know, whether they need additional information or not. And it probably have the same type of response that a survey does, which is like 25%. So, you know, you get 25 responses from the 100 people that receive a mailing. But at least you know that some people have gotten it, and then those who are really interested and proactive are going to seek out one of those methods that are identified on the card.
Okay. Well, let's pull. Well, let's pull something together, the one-pager and maybe the, this insert, this card insert for the next meeting on the 22nd. And then have the mailing out. And by the 22nd, we'll, we'll know a location and a date. We'll be able to figure that out. And then by early September, we can mail, do the mailing. Is it going to be a big deal getting the, the 80 properties? Getting those addresses?
No, I just gotta, well, Bill's gotta get that listing. He doesn't, he hasn't got that yet, the 80. He's only got the 40.
From, from Andres?
From Andres. Yeah. Did you get the other?
If he has it.
If he has, yeah, I mean, it's, it's, it's on those two right-hand, uh, maps up there.
Yeah, we really should, we gotta get that nailed down and find out who they are and, and get, start with the list, that's for sure.
Okay, well, let's do that.
That shouldn't be a big deal. We just gotta get, get wherever that list is and then we, it can be updated and something together.
So what's the expectation between now and next meeting? Barbara?
That we're going to nail down the 100 or whatever properties.
Yep.
And addresses. And that will have, we'll draft up a, uh, this one-pager. And, and a insert to that for responding.
Okay.
Barbara, can I talk to you briefly after the meeting about a minor scheduling situation in early October?
Okay. That just affects you or it affects?
It affects me.
Okay. Okay. Does that sound like a plan for now? Okay, let's move down to, um, the Select Board's next public hearing on the Enhanced Energy Plan. So, um, they haven't finished tweaking it yet. Uh, Mary Ashcroft's been working with Bill on that. And, um, they've, um, they fixed up where there was some confusion about the scenic, scenic areas going from 20 to 14. So the confusion was which ones were dropped? So, I mean, we, right now, we just have a list of the new 16. And, uh, we, we didn't, we don't mention the four that were dropped and, and people were interested in that. And there's some, they're still working on criterion number 10, right?
She has the language, if the statute sent it to you.
Oh, yeah, she did. I didn't bring it with me. Um, but the Select Board, the rest of the Select Board hasn't looked at it.
Right, so that was going to be given to them for Tuesday.
Right. Do you remember the essence of that was that, um...
It was very, it was close to what was presented, but it wasn't exact. Uh, I, she, she made all the notes for that part of it, so.
It was something about developers will be asked why it's necessary to go over and above the target.
Talked about what the, you know, what was the benefit versus the cost of the development to the town? Like basically like, we've met their goal, why should we let you do it? You know, and by reference, like, did it make sense or did it, we went through, we went through a bunch of different iterations before we got to what she has, so.
And it may still go through some iterations, the Select Board meeting. There was in another criterion, um, she wanted to add, and this is the, the legal term, no adverse impact. Right now, it just says no impact aesthetically on, on properties. And then the, the fourth thing they're, they're working on is, um, the, is, oh, oh, the Energy Committee, an energy coordinator.
Yes. It said that they shall.
Right. Right, and, and there's some language that they don't have to do that at all by statute. So that's going to be an interesting conversation with the Select Board.
You mean among them?
I, I mean, I, I guess they think, since they have an Energy Committee, that that committee can handle everything in this plan. That's... They seem reticent, and I think I've mentioned this before, about appointing another Energy Committee. What about if we urge them or encourage them to, to, to assign or select or appoint an Energy Coordinator? And then maybe gently push them into something a little more.
As long as they don't appoint us.
Right. I, I, you know, what, what should I go back to, how should I respond to this from this group?
I had on my desk at home the pamphlet that was handed out at the meeting that Sherman and I went to.
Yep.
That you conducted. Uh, and my recollection is it sort of outlines what needs to be done to implement an entry, Energy Plan. And if they haven't seen that, it might be sensible to, uh, give it to them, to give some idea of at least, I don't know whether that is put out by your office or was put out by one of the towns that were present at the meeting. But that might give them some idea of what, you know, some people are thinking about the scope of this. And my sense is it, again, from the meeting we attended, that it's far too comprehensive and detailed, given their other responsibilities for them to do it. But I don't think they've thought it all the way through or had time to.
Well, let's talk about that document afterwards that you're referring to and make sure I've got the right one.
Uh, let me, yeah, okay.
Yeah, I mean, um, there, there is going to be some money available across the state to help local Energy Committees and help them do their workshops, get organized, all that sort of stuff. Also, I think there, there probably are people in Rutland Town who would be interested in serving on an Energy Committee. You know? People who, you know, have the technical savvy or people who are upset about climate change or whatever. I don't know. What, what should be my message to the Select Board?
So what's the, what's the downside of what the Select Board is doing now? Were they, they consider themselves the Energy Commis, Committee?
They have one. Um, I would say the downside is that, that they all, how many committees do they, I mean, each, each member of the Select Board serves on four or five committees?
Listen up there, there's, there's, yeah, like, it's, there's a lot, there's a lot of committees over there. There are at least three or four each.
And there is one now.
There is one now, and it most, it, it was set up to deal with, um, specific developments coming into town. To make sure the contracts are ironclad, make sure the town is getting something out of these projects and, and doing the financial and legal parts that are necessary for the town. And that's all that they've done, right, Bill?
Yeah, that's what they were, that's what they created the committee for was, was for the, the development proposals they received.
So the intent of their Energy Committee is not the same, um, purpose as the Energy Committee that the Planning Commission has proposed?
Well, I don't, I don't believe they were reviewing the language you proposed before they created that committee, so.
They were. They were or they weren't?
They weren't.
They weren't, okay.
I don't think they'd seen that language before they created it, so I don't think they, I don't think they were there. But I think, I think the three people that are on it are prob, could, could probably handle it. It's just, it's a matter of if they want to and, you know, it's, it's a matter of how often are topics going to come up? They're going to have to get the three together because two is challenging, three is harder.
But if the committee... Sherman and me, you may have come away with a different sense of me, so please pipe up. But my sense is that, what was the town up in Addison, Northern Addison County was?
Charlotte.
Charlotte. I mean, these people are really working at this. This is a twice-a-month meeting and getting information out and, uh, I, I just don't think that, and certainly our Energy Plan doesn't, uh, elaborate on what the expectations are and what the role is. And, you know, I think somehow we may need to, you know, present to the Select Board or to just meet with the Energy Committee and say, look, this is what we see going on or you see going on. And, um, this is why we proposed it. And it doesn't seem to over, integrate with, uh, with what you're doing, what your scope is.
I, I may have misunderstood, but I was under the impression that they were meeting because they were attempting to develop a plan.
Sorry?
I thought that that Charlotte Committee that was meeting, that was meeting to develop a plan. They didn't have a plan and they were meeting.
Um, yeah, I can't remember to... Um, but it may not be, it may not be important either, either way because the extension of that committee, once they do have a plan, that will be their mission, is to carry out what's in there.
Right, but it, but the, but there's no, not a meeting every week if there's a, I mean, just because there's a committee and we have a plan, the committee, I assume, would only meet when there's, there is a decision to be made. And I, I, is there any, anything negative about just, just saying to the, the Select Board that we think that, that there's a lot to understand, to go through here and there are a lot of, a lot of things to be done in the event that we have to address an issue that's not consistent with the plan? And before you, and we'd like you to consider at least whether or not, uh, the existing committee is, is going to do that or whether there's, there's something addition that's needed?
There's a lot, my, my sense was from the meeting with the people from Charlotte and there's another town present too, or two, I've forgotten. And what I understood was expected of an Energy Committee. It dealt with various components of the Energy Plan. And a lot of it was informational on an ongoing basis. A lot of it had to do with, um, you know, having the town promote more energy-efficient, um, programs. The town's own, which probably wouldn't be the Energy Committee, but the town's own role in it down to energy-efficient vehicles, charging stations, uh, biomass facilities. I mean, it just seemed to me that it's a lot of boots-on-the-ground stuff and not policy stuff that the Select Board gets in. And it shouldn't, you know, and it would raise, if it were a Citizens Committee as opposed to a Planning Commission responsibility or a Select Board Committee, then it would, and it spread out to six or seven, whatever number of people, it would also raise the community's consciousness of, uh, the energy goals and the steps to take to it, so. And I, and it's, it's clear to me that our Energy Plan does not really state that, nor was it supposed to.
I'm going to jump in. The Venn diagram that we created at the end for, was to reflect the type of engagement that we were aspiring to inspire in, uh, the community. And if I'm not mistaken, there are particular tasks that are, that are ascribed to an Energy Committee.
Where's that? Excuse me.
I would be hard-pressed to pull the number of, the page number right off my head.
No, Barbara, just give me an idea.
I, I think it's towards the back of the Energy Plan that there were certain things that were, um, identified for perhaps Select Board, um, jurisdiction, some for the Energy Plan, some for a Coordinator. And I think the intent with the Venn diagram was to have representation from a variety of different, um, entities, whether it's the community at large, uh, someone from the Select Board, a representative from the Planning Commission, to, uh, create a committee that would be, um, self-functioning and making recommendations, much like the Planning Commission does, uh, for our planning purposes to the Select Board. Being responsible for the municipal plan, uh, having a process that is inclusive when we open the plan and rewrite it. This would be a group that would be focusing on the energy component of the plan because of the intensity and the targets that have been included in the plan. So it would require more than just the Select Board to try to manage that. So if we're going back to that vision, and I don't know that we are, but if we, if we are, then my recommendation would be to the Select Board that we encourage them to look at the Energy Committee as, uh, a broader, uh, representation than just the members of the Select Board that have a defined scope for an ad hoc committee. This would be more of a standing committee. They would have a specific purpose or charge from the Select Board. And that would be informed by the roles and tasks as we have outlined them in the Energy Plan. But that's my unique individual perspective.
Yeah, and in my experience working with towns, um, the most successful local Energy Committees are a different group of people. And they're very interested in this topic. And they really, they take it and run with it. And they, and that's, that's their only charge.
Right.
You know?
And you have, you have a Select Board member to make sure that there's a liaison between the Select Board and this committee so that it doesn't just go off on its own without good communication back to the governing body. So, and then we could potentially have a representative so that, um, anything that the Energy Committee would be doing could help inform us with respect to land use map, uh, or the, uh, general town plan or other types of, uh, communication ordinances or, or paperwork that we might permit, that we might want to, uh, develop.
Yeah. Any other comments? I mean, the Select Board does need to have a, a third public hearing because it's making changes.
Right.
To this.
Mm-hmm.
And they haven't set the date for that, uh, but I believe next week they'll look at Mary's suggestions. And, um, it does seem like they will pass the Energy Plan.
So would it, would it be appropriate to at least point out to them that, that what we, we just discussed now is part of, is described in the plan? I mean, in, in the new, not plan, in the Energy?
Section.
Section?
That, um, just so I get this straight, that the duties are delineated between Select Board and Planning Commission and Bill?
Energy Commission.
Yep.
Yes.
And that we, um, we see that, that that, we, we think that would work best?
Yes, and, and some of the things that, that, that we've said, that there are other things to be done other than just having a, having a plan and, uh, and, and enforcing it, I mean, there...
It's more of a roadmap.
Yes.
Of something that we can, a, a set of action items that we can work on.
Yep.
And it shouldn't be just the Planning Commission. It shouldn't be just the Select Board. It, it should incorporate, uh, potential volunteers or members from the community who could help advance some of that, advance some of that work so that we are, uh, working cohesively towards achieving some of the goals that are outlined.
It's even on the back page of your, in Dog and Pony Show.
Not to put you on the spot, Mary Beth, but I've noticed in, in, in other towns, it's, it's not just the middle-aged people serving on these local Energy Committees. Millennials seem to be interested in this topic. I'm speaking for myself.
No, it's a compliment.
Sherman and I wish that the minutes reflect or come.
I didn't mention the seniors in this. I didn't mention the seniors in this.
Ooh. Oh, I thought she did. I thought she was including us in the, the millennials. Andy, I don't know, I didn't mean to leave you out, but I assumed you were a lot younger than Sherman.
Okay.
Okay, so I think we got some marching orders there.
Thank you, Barbara.
And, um, let's see, Jim, you've, you've spoken to both Josh and I about the energy plan and some other things in the municipal plan that you think should be updated. I'm not sure the Select Board wants to dip their toes into that, um, in...
Well, you've got another, what, two or three years before that comes up?
Well, if the, when they adopt this, it'll be, the clock will start running, it's an eight-year clock.
Because I don't think there's anything, oh, burning the doors down, uh, in the regular plan, the regular portion.
Yeah.
Uh, when the time comes to make, uh, adjustments and, and, um, put it to the process to renew it, that would be...
You brought up some things with me, a couple of items that I think would fit in really well with a local energy group. You, you said, "We're gonna need to make, to make sure this is going to be affordable..."
Right.
"...for everyone in Rutland Town."
Right.
And that it's, um, you know, and, and make it less demanding than it appears on paper. And I, you know, I really think, you know, a, a, a committee that's really interested in this topic would be much more apt to take that on than an extension of the Select Board, an extension of us, for that matter.
Well, it distributes the, uh, the resources a little farther, and it, um, also distributes responsibility to people who might have interest, passion, and energy. No pun intended, sorry.
But, yeah, but if I'm interpreting Jim correctly, I mean, I think it would be good to have a group of people to make sure that just looks at, okay, okay, yes, we need to weatherize and all this kind of, and heat pumps and all that kind of stuff, but then also narrows that down to, okay, so what are we gonna do about the people who are not so well off? And, you know, are not, you know, state grants or state funds, um, just are not enough to help them do this sort of stuff, to kind of focus in on...
Well, you've got, uh, people that live in geographical areas that can't, uh, make use of solar because the sun only gets in there for maybe an hour or two every day in the past, and you've got these issues to deal with, that nobody has any control over solar. What are the adjustments that are gonna be forthcoming for people in those places right now?
Well, um, you, uh, hopefully some will come down from the state because the, as a whole, the state is way behind its goals for weatherizing homes, way behind, not even close.
Somewhere along the way, we, we need to either ask questions of them or tell them how we're gonna do it.
Yeah, yeah.
If they don't, uh, have any guidance.
Right, right. So I guess that's another thing to bring up to, to the Select Board, making sure this is a, a broad-based type of committee that reaches out to, to all members of the community. Um, anything else on energy? Any other questions or suggestions for...
So are you certain this is, or they, they have to have another, there was some talk at one point that the adjustments were just technical adjustments and the Select Board could make them...
Well, yes, yes, um, that's, um, one thing in statute, but there is this other part of statute where if they make changes within a certain amount of time, um, before, if they start making changes before their last public hearing, then they have to schedule another one. They have to, I, I think it's 30 days or something like that, they, they have to stop making changes and make that new plan available to the public, and, and that didn't happen, they were still, well, they're still tweaking away. So, once they're done with their suggestions, we'll have to wait 30 days and make sure it gets disseminated and everyone has a chance to look at it and all that. So that, that's another part of statute. The, the other one fell by the wayside because they, they were making changes, substantive or not. It, it, that doesn't matter, that second case, it could be minor changes, they just can't keep making them and not letting people know.
It probably makes sense in the long run to do it, I just was curious, because Mary had mentioned to me that was, that the, um, minor change thing, approach was under consideration, and it sounds like it didn't fly, and you've explained why.
Okay. Okay. Okay, let's move down to, um, let's leave energy and move down to, um, our assignment that we gave Dana, um, for coming up with some new guidelines. Uh, we, we initially called it debate and transparency. Um, we had a curveball, really swift, severe curveball thrown at us this afternoon.
Well, it's okay, I just, I, I, I took a few moments, um, to, to review these, and I don't see anything that's inconsistent in what we have here, in, in what the, the policy that the, um, Select Board has adopted. I haven't looked at it in detail, but it's very consistent with the, the terms that I have, you know, with your help, Barbara, and some input from Mary, tried to distill into, uh, just a code of ethics and transparency.
So what happened this afternoon is we found out, um, that the Select Board in June passed a, a new set of policies for conflict of interest.
The week after we had had our first discussion.
Yeah, and, and, um, we weren't aware of that, we weren't given copies of that, and what Dana did was he, in coming up with this debate and transparency code, he put in some conflict of interest stuff. So, um, we couldn't, we, we have to go with what the Select Board passed, we can't change what they did. Um, we can make it more strict, I guess, um, but we can't make it less strict, but, um, over to you, Dana.
Uh, so, uh, having done just a real quick review, because I had done lots of reviews of other types of codes of conduct and codes of ethics, uh, looking at this, this is a policy, I understand it's really, uh, as Bill was, uh, describing, it's for internal, uh, operating procedures, but I don't see it as being inconsistent with the charge that I had to look at, um, what we might want to do for our own, um, governance. It, what it does do is, on the second slide, and I'll hand this out and let you take a few minutes to look it over, take one for myself, I'll go one, two, three, and give one to Bill over there, too, maybe, four going this way, and four going this way. Mary Beth, have you had one to Jim?
Sure.
Thank you. Um, what I, what I liked, and I mentioned this to Barbara, what I liked about putting this together is I, I, I looked at a variety of, I looked at a variety of, um, codes, uh, and some of those are ones that I'm, that I actually am involved in, uh, and then I looked at, uh, some, uh, other resources, and it's, this was interesting, this was not one that I was familiar with, but it broke it down into two parts, it broke it down into a procedure for managing conflicts of interest, and it broke it down into an active participation section, so that, uh, partly, uh, the focus was on being proactive in what it meant to be a member of the, um, of the Board or the, uh, Commission, uh, as the case may be, and it talked about the, uh, cohesiveness that we discussed at previous meetings and the ability, uh, to work collaboratively and openly and transparently. So, the first section talks about what interest is, the second section just talks about, uh, productive engagement in the, um, in the work of the Commission.
But it's, it's a broad definition of, of conflicts of interest.
Correct.
Right.
It's a little narrower, I think, as it's described in, uh, the policy that the Select Board adopted. But this is not designed to be a policy so much as what we would be using as our operating principles as, as a board.
So, would you like the, the group to take this and look, look it over, and, and maybe we'll, uh, we'll send out what the Select Board passed for a policy? Although, you know, Mary informed us today about that, but she wasn't even sure if it applied to the Planning Commission, so I'll have to double check that. It, it applies to staff members and the, and the Select Board?
It, it, we have, we have, like I said, we have, there's other policies we have to update and we kind of, kind of define, we make definitions about what applies to whom, and, and I think there needs to be some other definition, other, other roles need to be defined as to a town employee, what constitutes, so I think there's other things that need to be done, but it probably will, but I don't know.
Right. When they passed this, what was their intention that, um, it, it was, it was...
It required a statute.
Okay.
Otherwise, I, I, there wasn't any discussion about, hey, we need to develop one, it was, there's a statute that says we have to do this, so that's what was done.
Right, okay. That probably explains the lack of dissemination.
That's what happened the last time when something was statutorily imposed and we heard about it with very little time to react, if I'm not mistaken, but, that's okay.
It happens.
So...
Is that the, the best plan right now, since we've got, just have everybody look over both documents, and then maybe get back to the Select Board and...
Uh, with respect to what, getting back to the Select Board, um, I'm not sure I, we haven't talked to the Select Board.
We haven't yet. We, we have let them know that we're coming up with some, some codes of conduct type things.
Right, just for operating, right, as a, as a Commission, right.
Yeah.
I know we mentioned that to Mary, I don't know if you mentioned that, Barbara, to the, uh, Select Board at one of your meetings, okay.
Do you think it's possible, Dana, just to go through what you've come up with and take out what might be duplicative of what they've done?
I'm happy to look at, I'm happy to look at theirs and do the same thing that I did, to develop this with this. If you're asking if I'm, if I'm willing to do a crosswalk, I'm happy to. Uh, I mean, that's, that's work that I've done in the past, and it will probably take me 40 minutes. So if you'd like me to see how, how this, and do a crosswalk and identify what on here is, uh, is referenced here, I'd be happy to do that. Um, if anybody else would like to, you know, look through both of the documents and, and put down feedback and we can have a discussion next time, I'm happy to.
Well, I'm a little confused at what you're gonna, about what you're gonna do.
All I'm gonna do is say, what is on this sheet that I handed out to you, and where is it referenced in the policy that the Select Board put together? That, that's all.
What, what if we conflict with...
Well, if we conflict, we can't, we can't conflict with something that the, um, that the Select Board has put in place.
Well, I understand that, but are you going to be looking for that as well? Where, whether we conflict with, that, that's where I was confused.
Well, that's what a crosswalk does.
Right.
It allows you...
That's not what I understood you to say, it's okay, I, I would like you to do that, but I didn't understand you to...
It's aligning, it's aligning what is on here...
Mm-hmm.
...and how it is, it correlates with what's on here. If there is something that's glaringly, um, in, in conflict, that would be highlighted.
So you, you're looking for consistencies and inconsistencies.
Correct, that, that's what I would do. And in my term crosswalk, that's what I was implying, I apologize that I didn't, um, explain that clearly.
Is the Selectment in draft form or have they finalized it?
They passed it.
They passed that?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, maybe we oughta get a copy of that, too.
Yeah.
Would you say? Maybe we need to get a copy of that.
Bill can hand out copies for tonight, can you, Bill?
Before we leave?
I mean, that was, that was the surprising, I, I, probably would have saved me, well, no, I won't speculate. It better not, it would be depressing.
So, yes, there's a lot of conflict of interest in, uh, content in what Dana came up with, but there are some other things about conduct...
Right.
Um, what's, what's becoming conduct, uh, within the Planning Commission and, um, outside of the Planning Commission, you know, you know, once decisions are made here.
And that's actually addressed in the, uh, policy that the, uh, Select Board has adopted.
Oh, did it?
Yes, it talks about ex parte communications, and it talks about, uh, decisions made within the, within the body and so on and so forth. So, my, my, my gut tells me and my, uh, brief analysis, having looked at probably a half dozen or more, um, similar documents to distill it down to this, is that they're, they're, they're very, they would be very consistent. So my crosswalk, I'm projecting, I'm theorizing here, that there's going to be a lot of consistency between the two. Where it's likely to be different is in the second section where it talks about active participation, because for me, this outlines the, uh, the, the work that we're committing ourselves to, and that we're doing that as a collegial cohesive group, and that the time for expressing, uh, divergent opinions is in the process when we're moving towards decision-making, but once we get to the decision-making process and we've decided that we want to move something forward and we vote on that, then we should be united as a, um, as, uh, an entity. And sometimes I can tell you that I've, uh, either objected to a vote or I have abstained from a vote, but I still support the vote because that's, that's what we do when we have, have taken collective action. So, uh, I'm trying to put that out there as, as something that would help us to do, be more actively engaged in the process and express those, um, divergent viewpoints so that we can incorporate them into, uh, what, our action, so that it's taking into consideration the, the best interest of the entire, uh, town. And we, we can only represent individual interests and small group interests, but hopefully through the process, we would be representing the aggregate of, um, the residents of, of the town and what's in their overall best interest, so. And as I told Barbara, no learning is ever wasted, so I, I'm not at all resentful that we got a curveball. I just ducked it, didn't hit me in the head, I'm feeling good about that.
Okay.
But then Norman didn't throw it at me, if he had thrown it at me, I'd...
That would have been different, huh?
It would have been different.
Well, I would really appreciate that.
Any other comments for, for Dana, as we set, send them off to do more work for us?
So are we going to...
I, I, I moved it to be presented to us tomorrow by nine o'clock.
As, as a group, we'll come back with any comments that we have on this for the next meeting, is that we're...
Yes, yes.
With the consistencies and inconsistencies between the two documents.
So you'll be able to, you think you'll be able to get that crosswalk done in time to get that out and then get some comments on that?
Oh, whoa, hang on. I gotta be clear what you're asking me to do. If everybody is looking at the documents, they'll have their own perspective. I would be happy to have a document ready to be discussed at the next meeting...
Okay.
...with a crosswalk. For, for me to get that out, for everybody to comment before we come back at the next meeting, I think that's a bit...
Okay.
That's a bit ambitious.
You're underestimating your abilities.
Ah, okay. I also, I also don't like riding, I don't, also don't like riding much uphill. But I could do it.
Don't like what?
Riding much uphill, bicycling uphill.
It's, it's, you know, if he misbehaves, we'll take him on the ride, we went on last, Sherman. The one we did last weekend.
Oh, and you left me out.
Pardon me?
Nothing.
Let's take this to after the meeting.
Yeah.
So the 22nd, uh, we'll, we'll have some, we'll have some more, um, another... So the 22nd, we'll have some, we'll have some more, another code, draft code to look at?
What I'm proposing, Barbara, is to take, I'm not proposing to do anything with this except to look at how this aligns and pull out any, any inconsistencies and where it is consistent for the group to discuss at the next meeting. I'm not proposing that I write, I will rewrite another code. Nope. Not at this point because I've, I've shared two with Barbara and Mary, and I've drafted multiple other copies. My instincts and my intellect tell me that this is going to be more of the same. If there's something that I would suggest that needs to be included or perhaps omitted, I will make those suggestions, but you may feel free to do whatever you like as well because it's not the Dana Show. It's really, it's our collective work. So that's, does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
It's kind of like what you and I did a little bit and sent that off to Mary after a review, so.
Okay.
Makes sense?
Understood? Makes sense? Okay, thanks.
And I'll try to get it out, I'll try to get it to you, Bill. Your timeline is a little more ambitious than I can maybe make, but you send things out a week to five days ahead of time, right?
Well-- As long, as long as it's by like the Monday--
The Monday, yeah, I can probably do that.
That's fine.
Forty-eight hours.
Yeah, it will be, so really like Tuesday is the latest, but Monday's good.
Yep, I'll try to get it, so Monday is the 19th, I believe.
Monday is the 19th.
That is, I think, a realistic expectation. So I'll get it to Bill, who will then just circulate it to everybody. Do you need this to copy more for folks, or you're going to send that electronically? What do you want to do?
I have copies.
Okay. If you can send me an electronic copy, just in case, that way I can cut and paste and not have to type it if I'm making any references to things.
Thank you very much, Dana.
You're quite welcome.
Okay, down to announcements or news. Do any members have anything to bring to the group? Bill, do you have anything? Approval of minutes from July 11th.
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Are you folks open to a few suggested revisions?
Absolutely. That's why we have a discussion, right?
Number, number four on the first page, looks like there's a typo after "Ask Mr. Tereso Questions." I think that's in regards. And number five, if we could add information between public meeting, I mean, all of these are public meetings, but the public information meeting ended at 6:38.
Yep. While you're still on that first page, Barbara. Number three, I think it, I think there's a typo that should be into what led to its creation with an LED.
Oh, yeah.
Otherwise, we're in the present tense. Oh, working with metal.
And then on the second page, number one, probably that's, the end of that sentence in number one is "on their personal views," plural. And then on that page under announcements, number two, is something, Bill, you and I still need to work on that stamp, just a reminder.
Well, that has nothing to do with the minutes. It's just a tally.
No.
Yep.
Aside.
So I will make a friendly amendment to my motion to approve the minutes with minor corrections.
You okay with that, Howard?
Right.
All those in favor of the minutes as amended? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Everyone will, does everyone expect to be here on the 22nd? Off?
Yes.
Okay. Have a motion to adjourn?
I move that we adjourn. Second.
We are adjourned?